Please rise for the pledge.
I'll get that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
There's a motion. We do have one change that I think we need to make.
All right, I'll amend my motion. Is that all right?
Yes, please.
I'll amend my motion to approve the agenda, but on the ordinance in item 9.2, we're going to table that.
So the motion to adopt ordinance 13-2018 rezoning Meridian Fields from agriculture to R2 is going to be tabled per your motion.
Correct.
Okay. Would you like to approve?
I'll second that.
I'll second the amended motion. Since we got that out, I'm going to ask if there's any further questions or comments. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to resident comments and questions. I'm sensing... We're good. We're good. Reports now in public hearings. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no unfinished business. Mr. Steinman, sir.
Yeah, we get right to you. I love your barber.
Got to grow hair where you can.
I got great respect for that, brother.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Oh, here I have something to pass out.
As I understand it, you have decent news. Thank you.
Good evening. So today we took bids at 10:00 a.m. on two issues, your Series A and your Series B, and I'll go through each of them individually. The first one on the top of the bid tab before you is your 2018A series. This was your borrowing for your City Hall project in the amount of $4,950,000. These were general obligation secured capital improvement plan bonds. If you add all of the underwriters up, about 32 underwriters, they combined into five bids, and the winning bid was Robert W. Baird and Company Incorporated and all of those syndicated underwriters underneath them at a true interest rate of 3.22 percent. And I think about a month and a half ago, we had an estimate in our recommendations that was at 3.45 percent. So the market has improved slightly. That's your A series?
Well done. Underpromising over deliver.
That's right.
Nice. Tell everybody back at the firm, this is how you do it.
Our secret's out. So on your B series, you had $1,040,000 that you offered for stormwater projects. Again, general obligation secured. These were utility revenue bonds secured by your stormwater revenues. Series 2018B, and you had sort of the same list of underwriters, about 30 underwriters, four total bids on this series. And again, Robert W. Baird purchased these at a true interest rate of 2.76 percent. So a good number of bids. Anything over two is a good representation of the market on both of these offerings. So my only additional comments, and then I'll be happy to take questions. Again, I'll always refer to your rating report a little bit and point out some things in your rating report because your staff does an immense amount of work to prepare for this intimidating hour-long discussion, usually, sometimes less. And it went very, very well this year. It was very smooth. So S&amp;P confirmed your AA rating, and they give you a stable outlook. That stable outlook means that they don't have any intention of changing your rating within the next two years unless something happens that would make them change your rating. Thank you.
I'm glad our attorney was here for that explanation.
Unless there's something unforeseen that should arise.
That's a better way to put it, yeah. I know I get a little cynical sometimes. So a double A rating, excellent rating. Again, you just have one notch and another movement to a triple A. So sometime within the next 20 years, we might get there.
We will.
But the comments on that first page, and I'll just briefly read through a couple of them. So they bullet point your very strong economy, your strong management, and good financial policies and practices.
I have a question. Why is "good" in quotation marks? Like, does it mean "good"?
No, because that's, I think, what they actually... That's where they insert the word that describes.
All of these words in the rating report, anytime a rating agency says a word, it means something very specific to them. So when they talk in your last, or your second to the last bullet, they say "very weak debt" and contingent liabilities. I mean, one of the negative issues. They choose their words very carefully. So "very" means something. You can't just take the word "very" out. Could you just say "weak debt"? No.
Why didn't they put "weak" in quotation marks?
Well, because under the second bullet, where it says "good financial policies and practices," I think that's because they have three categories under their financial policies and practices, under their financial management assessment: strong, good, and fair. So they specifically have three categories, and maybe that's why they use the quotations around "good." Adequate budgetary performance with an operating surplus, very strong budgetary flexibility with an available fund balance, that's 53 percent of your operating expenditures, very strong liquidity, very weak debt and contingent liability position, and a strong institutional framework score that everybody gets that is nearby the Twin Cities metropolitan statistical area. And then there are paragraphs describing each one of those bullets within the rating report. I won't obviously read all those to you, but it's good information as you move forward. Given that, I'm happy to take questions. My recommendations are that the resolutions in your packet be approved to award to Robert W. Baird on the Series A at 3.22 percent and Robert W. Baird on the Series B at 2.76 percent. I should mention, too, on the A, you had a premium bid. Your bids sold at a premium which generated additional dollars that will go into your project construction fund. So you have more dollars than originally anticipated to spend from your project construction fund, about $200,000.
That's good news. And do we have to make a separate motion to accept that premium automatically?
No. It's all constructed into the resolutions. They were drafted after we restructured the bonds post-sale.
Cool. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Can you explain the premium just a little bit more in depth? Because I'm not quite sure that I get how that works.
The best question ever, or worst question, depending upon how one looks at it.
For the answerer, for the answerer, it's the worst.
So it's a little bit of bond math sausage making. So I won't get into too many details.
She's from Wisconsin. She gets it.
Keep it like third grade reading level.
So basically, I think the primary aspect of that that councils need to understand is that it looks and acts just like another source of funds. All of a sudden, you have another source of funds, in this case, of about $185,000. And it just... Because underwriters sell into a market today where the market is anticipating higher interest rates. So they want to pay more for bonds so that in the future, they don't have bonds that are considered worthless against the current market. Yada, yada, yada. Again, so it produced an additional $185,000 above what you had originally asked for, and it shows up in the paperwork that you received under the post-sale schedules as an additional source of funds. You can use that source of funds to reduce what you borrow, or you can keep that additional source of funds and use it for additional project costs. And that is what you chose today.
So it's a built-in safety net if we need it. Otherwise, if we don't need it, we can turn it back in and basically pay off some interest.
That's correct. Right. The only... Yeah, because if you keep it, obviously, you pay interest on it.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does that answer your question? Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 127-18, providing for the issuance and sale of $4,950,000 general obligation capital improvement plan bonds, Series 2018A, and levying a tax for the payment thereof.
It's a motion by Councilmember Monroe.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Henry. Any questions or concerns, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 128-18, providing for the issuance and sale of $1,040,000 general obligation utility revenue bonds, Series 2018B, and pledging net revenues for the security and payment thereof.
There's a motion by Councilmember Johnson.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Henry. Any comments, questions, concerns? Thank you, Mr. Steinman.
You did a phenomenal job.
Yep, well done. Thank you for overpromising and underpromising.
Don't tell anyone.
Yeah, well done. Good business. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
You're turning into a damn partner.
That's the idea.
Ah, nice. All right, let's move forward to Meridian Fields, which would be Ms. Erin Smith. Smidicks?
Thank you.
Just keep going. The next eight items are all you, so get after it.
It's going to be a marathon. Mayor and Council, thank you. Tonight, we are reviewing the preliminary plat for Meridian Fields. We tabled the rezoning. I was really optimistic we were going to get some good news from the Met Council today about a comprehensive plan amendment, which didn't come in. So rezoning will come soon.
But we didn't get bad news.
No, just no news. Yeah, I suspect the holidays messing with some people's schedules. So tonight is just preliminary plat rezoning to come soon. So a little bit of detail about where we are in the process. The city council saw the concept plan for this project on February 19th. We're at preliminary plat tonight. The property was recently annexed. Comprehensive plan amendment is in with the Met Council, and final plat dates are to be determined right now. Backing up a step for some context of where we are. So this project is located south of Highway 212, west of Jonathan Carver Parkway, northwest of the Carver Elementary School. It's 83 single-family homes to be developed by D.R. Horton. On the screen now is the preliminary plat that we're looking for action on tonight. It shows the 83 lots, the outlots on the property, phasing of the property. The phasing includes 36 lots in Phase 1, 47 in Phase 2. The outlots that will be maintained by the city are typical practice, so keeping the wetlands and their buffers in an outlot to be maintained by the city to make sure they continue to operate correctly. And a unique outlot that the city is interested in potentially taking is in the right-hand corner of the screen. It's Outlot G. Brian Skulk and I have identified this location to have some mature trees, and we're hoping to maybe develop it as either a trailhead or potentially a birdwatching area that could be developed for a park. So more to come on that, but we've recognized that it might be a unique feature on the site.
I like birdwatching.
Something that we've talked about as a group is the street names within this property. The development team is here tonight, so if you'd like to start some dialogue with them about possibly revising the street names, this would be a fantastic time to do it. If you have suggestions, even better.
I had kind of hoped that the planning commission would get involved with the street names.
We'll touch on that in a second.
Okay.
Moving into some more project specifics. So this property is set to be guided R2 street zoning. So the first project in a while that's not requesting the planned residential development, they are hoping to hit that R2 exclusively as written in our city code. So that includes a minimum lot area of 7,000 square feet, a minimum lot width of 60, front yard setback of 25, rear of 20, and the side of 7.5. The average lot size in this development is about 10,000 square feet, with the smallest being 8,854.
So just clarification purposes, I don't mean to interrupt you. When you say seven and a half feet, it's 15 feet between the houses.
Correct.
15?
As part of this project, with relation to Highway 212, a noise study was required to be submitted to the city by the developer. Through the noise study, we found that the residential noise level is exceeded between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m. So the noise from Highway 212 exceeds the noise standards that are set during that one-hour span of the day. So we've explored several options with the development team and city staff. Together, we've come to a place of mutual understanding that there will be upgraded construction material. The developer can probably speak more specifically to some of that. But we've worked as well to create a berm and landscaping on the property. So we explored several options. If it were to be exclusively a berm, it was determined that it would need to be 17 feet, and there wasn't adequate space for that. So working together, we do feel like this is a great option.
17 feet high?
Correct.
That's almost as high as the Fleet Farm. No, never mind.
Something else that we've been working on that's been changing throughout the process is access into the site. So if you'll recall, the concept plan often showed a roundabout on the property, and it's shifted a couple times in the plans that we've seen as a group. So we're working right now on solidifying the access off Jonathan Carver Parkway with the potential expansion of Spring Creek Drive into the property. So across the United Properties piece into the D.R. Horton piece. So we're working through this right now with the developer. We think we're getting really close to what it's going to look like. Andrew, buddy with Bolton &amp; Menk, has been really great at reviewing some of this to ensure that the queuing of the cars will be adequate at those peak times of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00. So you'll see that the roundabout was shifted off the plan, and it turns into a four-way stop. Based on the amount of traffic that we anticipate, not only from this site and the potential commercial development, but everything moving west that could develop as residential, the queuing space wasn't adequate in the roundabout. It was determined that cars would often get stuck in that roundabout and stop moving. So we feel like this is the better option to address the peak times that people often see at 8:00 a.m. and 5:00.
Okay, that was fast. Just so that I understand, we originally had the roundabout there.
What was that?
We originally...
We originally had the roundabout.
Correct.
And now it's being proposed as a four-lane movement of traffic.
So eventually, in a final build-out, this is what it will look like. For this property specifically, we don't anticipate that they'll need as much space that is shown, but we are trying to think not only about this project, but everything west. So this is what the ultimate build-out will likely look like.
Okay, so the ultimate build-out will look like that. What will it look like from the start?
So we're working through that. We have a meeting with the county in a couple days that we're trying to firm up. So we're all on the same page together at the same time.
You talk fast.
Sorry, I can slow down.
I got there, though.
So something else that is kind of exciting about this project, I think at least, is the landscaping. So if you're familiar with the site, there aren't a lot of trees there today. So there's no requirement for replacement required, which is interesting to think that this farm field will suddenly have some houses that will require some landscaping. So through the process, we'll be gaining 2,483 caliber inches of trees. If you think that a small tree going in is generally three inches in diameter, we're gaining 827 trees through this process.
Wow, that's great.
Here's a close-up that shows the landscape requirement calculations, and also some sensitive areas on the site that have some pretty significant buffering. So you'll see along Highway 212, the buffering gets denser to make sure that we meet the requirements that the residential property will operate at acceptable noise levels for people living there. And there's also generous buffering along the east property line, if that property were to develop in the future as commercial, to give the people about that property some landscaping between, whether that be for lighting or increased traffic behind them. Some examples of the homes that we can anticipate seeing on the site, these were provided by D.R. Horton. It's their Express Line of Homes. So this is what houses will likely look like as proposed by D.R. Horton.
I want to go the other way.
I'm going to back up one. So the planning commission held their public hearing on June 21st. There was no public comment from anyone at the public hearing, and they approved the preliminary plat on a four-to-zero vote. I did talk to them a little bit about street names, but it was pretty on the spot. And I think it's something that we can venture down moving forward to say, as part of their packet review, come with a couple of street names. But to say to them, hey, I need you to think of three new street names right now, felt a little rushed for them. So if you have some suggestions tonight, that would be great.
Well, I could do... I could come up with three.
Otherwise, I would be happy to facilitate a conversation with the developer as we maybe start to think of some ideas. So that is what I have right now. I'll open it up for discussion. Members from the development team are here, both from D.R. Horton and Westwood, who did the engineering. So if you have specific questions, feel free to ask them to join the conversation as well.
Okay, I have a question about if we approve the preliminary plat tonight.
Yep.
Can the street names be changed later?
They can.
Okay. I thought that's what you meant, but I just wanted to clarify.
Who's with D.R. Horton? That's what I recognize. Come on up. Are you guys amenable to changing names? I don't... I mean, you guys, do you have your hearts set on Summit Lane?
Good evening. My name is Deb Ridgeway with D.R. Horton. Absolutely. We were directed by the city to come up with some names, and our marketing folks came up with those. So we're... Yes, we are very open to it. We're not married to the names.
Got it, okay.
Well, here's what I think. And I don't know, I'm not speaking for the council, I'm just speaking for myself. I like it when at least one or two streets in a development have some sort of historical connection to where that development is, and Carver, and obviously, you can't use Carver in it because there's too many Carver words.
There are.
But that's kind of...
Yeah, absolutely. And we can work with whoever at the city to come up with some names.
Okay.
Revised names.
Are you talking in reference to like the original property owners and the farms?
Sometimes, yeah. That can work, or just something...
I think that sounds like a good idea, too. It doesn't have to be all of them.
No.
It has to be.
But then it's...
We don't have a summit up there that's not the highest peace.
Well, and I understand that the name of the development is Meridian, but do we really have to have road names in Meridian?
Right, right.
Well, I... Names are really cool and important. What are the price points? I haven't seen the information on the price points somewhere you're looking at.
So the price points, we anticipate probably starting in the low 300s to the mid 300s, 300,000s.
So if I go through your house, and I'm a potential buyer, and I want to say, hey, I'd like to upgrade the windows, or these doors are hollow, I'd like a six-panel solid door, are those options available with D.R. Horton?
With our Express Line Homes, it's very limited packages to keep the price points down. So no, there isn't the ability to change up and down.
I told you. We weren't arguing about it, but it was a whole different line of a Maddy home than a Lennar, and like the floor plan, but you can hear through every door. And I hate to pay for doors when I have to change them out, especially windows. So... All right.
And they have basements, right?
Yeah, so it's essentially, we call it, it's like a side-split house. So you enter on the main floor, then you go up a few steps to the bedrooms, and then down a few steps to the living area, and then additional like rec room or bedroom.
Kind of like a split entry, sort of, but not...
Kind of, but you're entering on the main... So your living kitchen and dining are on one level right when you walk in.
Oh, so it's like seven, eight steps up to it?
What's that?
Seven or eight steps up to that level in the...
Nope. You walk right in at that level.
Oh, I see.
And then a few stairs, which the living space, the bedrooms are behind the garage. So that's why it looks like a ranch or a one-level house right now, because the living space, the bedroom spaces are behind the garage.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
Is there going to be an association with this development?
No, we do not anticipate at this time there is an association.
Okay.
Put that makes our life easier.
I'm also wondering, it said kind of upgrading the windows. Are those just going to be on the homes that are closest to 212 or throughout the development?
Yes, that's... Right now, with our pricing of the product, that is the plan, is to just put it on the houses that are within that threshold of needing to do so.
Okay. For what it's worth, my suggestion would maybe be make that an option for everyone, because I have a feeling it's going to be fairly noisy in there.
Sure.
Just a follow-up question with the noise. There is that birmingham kind of behind lots 28, 29, 30, and then the Ghost plot, and almost like, kind of 26 through 30.
Yep.
But nothing in that Outlot A area. Is there any concern with the noise levels from there reaching the Phase 2 homes like 7 through 12, and yeah, everything along Summit Lane?
Actually, when the noise study, and Rob Olson with Westwood is here, he has more knowledge on the noise study. But the noise levels were highest... I don't even know if we can put the site plan up. It might be easier. Through that, lots 9, 10, and 11, I believe were... Oh, there we go. So the noise really was at 26, 27, 28, 29, 30. I think it might have gone down to 24. The inside units, however, were protected from the outside unit, so there wasn't as a concern about the noise on those when they did the testing. But it doesn't go all the way. The noise, when they tested it, we were within range on the 8, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12 that you're referring to on that cul-de-sac.
Okay.
There's also a significant wetland in that Outlot A, so it would prevent us from doing any type of birmingham as well.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I think in terms of names, wow, I think names are important. I have a couple of suggestions. But how do you want to... Do you want to put together, we just give you our suggestions and then we go through you?
Yes.
Perfect. All right.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 125-18, approving the preliminary plat for the residential development to be known as Meridian Fields, submitted by D.R. Horton.
There's a motion by Councilmember Mock.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Hank. Any further discussion or comments, questions? I have one question. You guys have done your homework, I assume. And, you know, it's interesting because that is right along a busy highway, and people's first thought process is that... Do you guys have any concerns about selling these lots at all?
No, we'll try to get the landscaping in place as soon as possible. We also would like to do a fence probably along the rear yards of some of those. So it helps marketing.
Sure.
But no, there isn't any concern.
Right on. That's all I had. Anything else? There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thanks for the information.
Thank you. Thank you.
9.2, the second part of that is tabled. So now we are going to 9.3 Hawthorne Ridge Concept Plan. Are you guys going to stick around and get like ideas from the other builders?
It's D.R. Horton again.
Oh, yeah, you're right. You're right. Never mind. Well, there's another one in here. All right. Good point. Get after it. Yep, I'm so ready.
Tonight, we're reviewing the concept plan for a development known as Hawthorne Ridge. You'll know this property probably formally as the Ellen Redmond Farm. So it's currently addressed as 880 Broadway North, kind of in the center of Carver. So the project, again, is to be developed by D.R. Horton and will include 81 single-family homes. As you can see, there's two nodes of development, the north and south, is how I'll refer to them throughout the next couple of slides. As you can see, there's two nodes of development, the north and south is how I'll refer to them throughout the next couple of slides. You'll see on this slide, there's a green line coming from the existing driveway into the north node of the development. This is a proposed trail connection that the Planning Commission, City Council, and staff has identified as something that we would like to work towards as a group to maintain that trail and have access into this development. We're currently working through some outlot ownership questions. We're trying to schedule a site visit to get both staff and council out to the site to potentially see if we can find the cheese caves and then hopefully give you a good visual. Okay, Glenn knows what that is.
Glenn and I could do it blindfolded.
Well, that would be a fun, that would be a fun field trip for me.
Lot of bugs.
So Brent has been working with the League of Minnesota Cities to think a little bit through liability, too. So we're just trying to make sure we understand what we might be taking on and what that might look like as a long-term maintenance plan. So a site visit will be scheduled soon. We'll let you know when it is. I heard you might want to bring bug spray.
I want to go.
So a bit closer up, the north node of the site has 60 units and south 21 to come to their 81 total. And the three access points on Ironwood, Aspen, and then off Sunny Ridge Drive. The two north are existing roadways and the south is an existing right-of-way. So a quick grab off Google, you can see that Ironwood and Aspen are constructed already and Sunny Ridge Drive does have the space to accommodate the street. As part of this development process, D.R., D.R. Horton had a neighborhood meeting and they invited property owners within 350 feet, which is the typical mailing for a preliminary plat and rezoning. So it's the group that would be getting the mailings if they should come to me. So that was a few weeks ago. 16 people were there and there was some really great dialogue with D.R. Horton just talking about the project, voicing some concerns and starting to build that relationship because some of these property owners will be impacted by the development of the site. The Planning Commission also reviewed this project at their last meeting in June. They had some discussion about the outlot. There were a few members of the Planning Commission that felt pretty passionately about the city maintaining the outlot. They also had some ideas about a nature-based park. So not a park necessarily that would have playground equipment, but a more nature-based, so some tree stumps and places for more imaginary play in a, a nature-based park.
What was their reasoning between, behind this, being passionate about the city holding on to part of the outlots?
I think it's largely the cheese caves and some of the history that the site has. But I will also say, we've been trying to be thoughtful, our staff, to think about existing erosion on the site. Because if we do maintain that, that would fall to us for maintenance. So I think we need to do some fact gathering about the site today so we can start making some decisions. It sounds like a really great idea to maybe hang on to it, but it also might be a can of worms once we start looking at it closer.
Typically developers give us land that they don't want. No, I mean, no offense, but, alright. I just, I just wanted, sorry, I just wanted to know if there was any, what their passion was, so, go ahead.
Alright, my question is this. I have concerns about erosion there. So i, i, if, if the city should decide that, no, we're not taking that on, the developer has to keep it. In their development, would they need to address how they're going to control erosion and...
Yes, we could require that. And it also will largely depend on the ownership. So who will own it, who will maintain it, what happens after a large rainfall? So things that we'll be thinking about as we continue to move through the process.
Okay.
The Planning Commission also had a pretty significant discussion about Aspen Drive. So it's a bit narrower than Ironwood. And we had some discussion about how to keep Aspen a little quieter potentially, so some traffic calming that could happen just because the street is narrower than Ironwood Drive. On the screen...
Just out of curiosity, sorry, were there any major objections from the public on, you know, how people sometimes go and not on? Did we have any of that?
No, nothing that wasn't the typical pains of development, so property value buffering. But the dialogue that D.R. Horton had, I think, addressed several of the concerns. They also were really open about giving out their phone numbers, which was helpful. So if this project moves forward and construction starts to become an issue, it sounds like D.R. Horton is very willing to be a partner with us to make sure that things are maintained well. On the screen now are some examples of the homes that would be proposed to be built in Hawthorne Ridge. So it's a different line from D.R. Horton, a bit larger. The smallest home is 1,517 feet, the largest 3,400. So definitely becomes a different product type than what we saw previously in Meridian Fields.
And what price points are those at?
Four and above. What is the, what's above? Okay. I love that answer. Just in four.
So no formal action is required tonight. It's just dialogue with the developer. If there's major things you would like to see as they continue to dive in a little bit more, this is a great time to bring them up. Preliminary plat, if they should choose to apply, is when they start doing some of the serious engineering work. So the site plan might change a little bit, but right now we're thinking really high-level concept, things we'd like to see, things we dislike about this plan, so.
Hank?
I like the plan. Yeah, I was. There's one, there's one area of erosion that where all the, where all the noles and everything drain down into. And it runs on into Spring Creek. It runs underneath the railroad tracks, what used to be there. And there's a grate on the north side of the tracks that has a tendency when rain and it washes in lots of wood and has a tendency to block the grits, grades and everything. That's a concern with a few people that live on Sixth Street because it, it's, it runs underneath and all the way through down to Spring Creek from there. I'll point it out to you later on the map. But that's the biggest concern that, that I've heard from anybody. I think it's going to be a great piece of property.
I will say, we've worked with Andrew Buddy with Bolton and Mink on that erosion issue. So if you didn't get the complete visual where it is, I think we have a pretty good idea.
Anyone else? Comments, questions?
Will this development have a homeowners' association?
Homeowners' Association.
Hello again. Will this development have a homeowners' association?
Will this development have a homeowners' association?
Right now, we do not anticipate a homeowners' association. There's, we're, this, again, it's conceptual, but we really, we don't have any common areas that we're proposing. So no, not at this time, but that could change as we move through the process.
I think it's great that you are not having homeowners' associations in either of those.
Go ahead.
Well, I have a question. If there's no homeowners' association and the city should decide that they don't want any of this outlot property, how will it be maintained?
Well, we'd have to work with the city on that. We, we, we could have a homeowners' association. We could extend the lot lines out to the edges of the property and create a conservation easement or something over that for protection. Obviously, it's a bluff area, so you can't develop into that area anyway.
Yep.
Ideally, we would like this, I think it would be beneficial for the city to take it from our perspective, but...
Well...
Well, that's fair.
Knowing, knowing bluffs like I do, I don't want bluffs.
And that's, and that's fair, and that stuff that will work out.
And, and we're hoping that through the development of this property that it'll help with the drainage. We're going to, you'll be concentrating the drainage, we'll have ponding on site, so there won't be a lot of overland and such, so.
And then maybe, this is a question for Erin. On Aspen and Ironwood, where the two roads will connect now and come out, are there, well, I was looking, there's the stop sign on that one. I was just wondering what traffic control was going to look like there.
Sure. So as we start thinking about this project, we'll have Andrew do a traffic impact. So we'll determine if stop signs are warranted.
Because there's not, there is not one on Ironwood in any direction right now?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, there'd be changes up there. But every one of those homes were built and everybody knew that those roads were going through. So, and that's why I was asking if that was a conversation instead of a fight, so. Go ahead.
I like this preliminary plat. I really, really like the driveway being turned into a trail, getting up in there. I think that that's going to be...
What being turned into a trail?
driveway.
Ellen's existing driveway. So I think that that's really neat and that'll be a cool addition to that.
Yes, definitely.
I like it. I think it's interesting because I've been in this town for a long time, as all we have, all of us have. And for years, we'd look up and say that that's going to all be two, three, four million dollar homes with those bluff views and everything else. And, and we kind of thought, well, it's probably not going to be. So here we are. It's interesting to watch that process. So if we don't need anything, we can move on. Right back to...
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, 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 no. Thank you. I like that. You know what, and I feel like it would be really beneficial for us to take that on. I appreciate that. Moving on to nine point four, comprehensive plan amendment. Erin Smith.
Thank you. So we are still working through some details with Hawthorne Ridge. So the project that we just saw, we are now talking about a comprehensive plan amendment. So in the 2030 plan, the property that is proposed to be developed by D.R. Horton is a mix of medium density and low density, so a mix of two to four units per acre and four to eight units. So with the request of this project coming in at Sketch Plat, there is a request to re-guide the property to low density. So D.R. Horton is working on a low, low-density single-family development. The information did go out to the affected jurisdictions. The 60-day window has closed. We did not receive any formal comment with objection to this process, this project. So moving forward, everything will go into the Met Council for their review. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 17th. And there were a few people who did attend and they generally were supportive of the change in the guidance to go from medium and low to just low. So visually, here's the layout. So in the 2030 guidance, you'll see the northern portion of the property is medium, south is low. And in the draft 2040 plan today, it's all low density. So tonight, with the resolution that's on the floor, it will be part of the package that gets sent to the Met Council for their full review of the comprehensive plan amendment.
So all we need is a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution, let's see, 126-18, amending the comprehensive plan for the Hawthorne Ridge.
Motion by Councilmember Monroe.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Hank. Any further questions, comments? Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This is easy. Is it ever, is it always this easy for you guys?
It's not.
Well, let's, 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 let's talk about those outlots. Alright, thank you guys very much. Moving on, geez, Erin Smith, nine point five, Oak Tree.
Thank you. So Oak Tree is a development that we've seen recently at Final Plat. It's along Jonathan Carver Parkway, just north of Carver Square. Part of the process with Oak Tree is that it requires a planned residential development overlay over the R2 district. So the PRDs are generally really specific to the site. And we like to have a pretty good handle on the project before we pass something as specific as this ordinance is. So historically, we've wanted to ensure that the project moves forward prior to the rezoning. As you'll recall, Final Plat approval has been given to Phase One of the development. So this is the rezoning request. We're anticipating Phase Two of the Final Plat to come before the council in a couple of weeks.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 12-2018, rezoning Oak Tree to an R2/PRD.
It's a motion by Councilmember Monroe.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Mock. Motion and a second. Any further comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now moving on to communications. Monroe?
Do you not have anything to communicate?
Jansen? Yeah, I got that one. It just came to me.
I was just going to make a request. Brent and I were talking about it this afternoon, this morning. Can we reignite the fire underneath, not the fire, just talking about the levee study again. I think that that's stalled out a little bit and it's been a while since we've seen our friends. And it would probably be good to have them back in for a work session and, at least, and probably a follow-up with the council session as well.
Agreed. Anyone not agree?
Well, I, I would like some information before we all sit down again. I mean, if we don't even have the, the information I'd like to see is how many properties are affected? What is going to cost to do this? Or ballpark it.
To, to do the complete study?
Do the complete study.
That's fair. We've only been talking about this for like, I don't know, 14, 15 years. We should come to some conclusion. I think you're right.
Yeah.
Let's not leave it to the next council. We'll take that, Larry. Okay.
That's it for me.
Okay. Mock?
I don't have anything.
Hank?
I got nothing.
Mr. Merrick?
Just want, excuse me, invite Deputy LaSard to come up. He's got, I think, some updates he'd like to share with the council.
Come on up there, Captain.
Yeah, we hadn't heard from you for a while.
Been a while.
Is this a special pre-Fourth of July updates?
No, it's my quarterly update. I was here April last.
Could that yellow taser reach up here?
Yes.
You'll get away from me.
So yes, quarterly report, just make a visit. Currently, Officer Trick and I are working the city of Carver. Throughout the summer, that'll change. Officer Trick will go back to the schools. And then the sheriff's office is currently lining up another deputy to work the Carver-Laketown position.
Another deputy other than you?
The night guy.
Oh.
So I'll be here.
Are you leaving?
Nope, I'm still here for the year.
Okay.
Other than that...
Thought this was like a big announcement.
No, no, actually, I thought this was my normal meeting day, so I made an appearance and put myself on the agenda.
Alright.
Other than that, the sheriff's office, you know, went to the vehicle fair, very heavily occupied. It was busy. I mean, I see a kid for the first 45 minutes to an hour. I think I put comments there. We had a sheriff's office riverboat there. The Carver car was there and then we brought an unmarked traffic car with ghost graphics. A lot of return faces. I was amazed. People came from Mound, Savage, Eden Prairie, Wayzata to attend the event. So it was a good turnout. Other than that, I've been dealing with, you know, calls for service, just basic, you know, check my neighborhood for speeding or some ordinance violations I've been following up on, making sure that, you know, people are staying in line, so.
Are you seeing any uptick or additional duties up at Fleet Farm at all? How much of that time, if you had to give a percentage, what does that take?
You know, it's, I think it's hit and miss, you know, depending on, you know, where, I think we used to be up there daily, you know. Now it's weekly.
Okay.
We still go up there, patrol the lot, walk through. I think it all depends on just...
Get your licorice.
Free popcorn and a fill-up.
So we get up there, you know, no different than anywhere else, you know, cases, we get about the same amount of calls for service. Nothing's increased.
Got it. Good to know.
Larry, I have a couple of questions for you. I know that we've been having some trouble with people who maybe aren't aware of the change of the one-way direction and coming down the street by Harvey's the wrong way. Have you seen that that's been tapering off now as people get more used to it? Or do you think maybe something like putting orange flags on those, those one-way signs at the end just to highlight for now?
About a month ago. And I'm not sure if it's happening at evenings or certain times. I've checked it anywhere from, you know, I stay about an hour each time. And I've done it two, three times a week for the past month and I've only stopped three or four people. Some people were, oh, I was just going down Third and then they realized the cars are parked the wrong way. We did have some issues with...
And you arrested them.
We educated them. Other than that, there were some concerns about delivery trucks. And we've talked with them and the businesses and delivery trucks are going the correct way. So someone might sneak through occasionally.
The ones I've seen look a little bewildered once they get to the other end, like, whoopsie. But that's why I was wondering, is it something where if we put some orange flags on those signs just for another month or two? Just to make people really...
I did check to make sure there's, you know, no left turn, no right turn signs on Jorgensen. So they're aware of that and...
Yeah, I would agree with you because, not this last weekend, weekend before, I was coming up from Southern Minnesota and I came, you know, through 40, down 40, turned, I'm going through town. I'm going through town, I'm not expecting a car to come out of Third anymore and to take a left, well, not to come out at all, this car pulled out right in front of me and I'm like, where'd you come from?
The bar.
I thought you were gonna say it was you. You came back and you forgot.
So, I mean, I think it is still a problem, especially people who are so used to it being a two-way.
And it's on, we have a list, you know, of areas that we focus on.
Yeah, so I, I would agree with you there, I think if we flagged it, it'll help.
Just go fast on Sixth Street.
And then another area, and obviously you notice what you live by the most, um, the, the stop sign here coming in, that you make the turn onto Broadway from Main Street, um, maybe just watch them for kind of rolling through that stop sign, there's a lot of kids out during the summertime now on bikes and people are walking, and I've just noticed there's a lot of rolling through that stop sign rather than making a stop at it.
We can do that as well.
Thanks, that left-hand turn, go pretty fast, so.
Thanks.
Anything else?
No.
Um, I just have one question. Oh, go ahead, Brent, go, jeez, my bad.
All right.
You keep going.
Uh, just one other item, and I've mentioned this in some updates, but Brian in the Public Services Department, and this is for some of the folks that are watching as well, they're getting quotes to do some tree trimming along Sixth Street West, uh, the primary concern is the trail access right now is pretty bad, uh, the reason I mention is, a lot of folks are used to that tree canopy and we're gonna do the best that we can to maintain some of that, but it's gonna look a lot different than I think folks are used to, because there's some significant tree cover that, um, and the way that the trees are growing, should that break off, uh, we could have some people getting hurt and we want to avoid that, uh, but just wanted to kind of broach that with the council and make sure that you're aware of that, and if there's additional direction that you'd like me to provide to Brian or the contractor, that you, that you take advantage of that now.
I think it's a great idea. Are you, uh, going out for bids on that or contacting individual?
Brian's getting soliciting quotes.
He is, okay, all right.
Will you guys be doing some Facebook messages and website stuff, if it's gonna be that noticeable?
It's gonna be noticeable, very noticeable.
Do something, just like we did with Oak Tree when those trees came down.
Sure.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, we're not.
And you get yelled at.
We're not looking to take down the entire tree, just parts of them, but depending upon how their, kind of their growth arc is, well.
Growth arc?
They'll, they'll go back.
I get what I said.
He knew that as soon as he said it.
It's a little bit like hair on Sixth Street, they'll, you'll cut it and it'll grow back. And that's good, I'm gonna just cut it again, so it's just getting a little haircut.
Right, but to, Councilmember Johnson's question, yes, we'll get, we'll get notices before we start that, cause it'll be, um, there'll be some traffic disruption, I'd imagine, in the, in certain locations along that stretch as well.
Growth arc. Ah, boy, um, I just, are you done? Sorry.
Thank you.
Anyone, anyone else? Um, I just have one quick question, I think it's the elephant in the living room, when's the building coming down? I know, but it's not on that packet.
Yes, so we are having a pre-construction meeting, actually tomorrow morning at nine o'clock right here, um, you'll start to see, uh, demo, so XL is planning on taking the power lines down, they're hoping this week, but more than likely, it's gonna be next week, and that's what's been kinda holding us back a little bit, we don't wanna start demo until those lines are taken down just for safety reasons, so, um, in your packet, there's a, kind of a three-week lookout, we'll do a, start doing a better job of, on the City Hall tab, on the website, and then kind of a, what I'd call like a open diary on the website and our social media accounts updating folks, but you'll, you'll start to see, uh, work in earnest the week of July 9th, and then the following week, I'd anticipate, uh, work, uh, starting to actually demolish the, the structure.
Cool, um, I, if at all possible, maybe even, because I'm looking at this, uh, the work plan, um, might be a little bit of accountability to publish that, but.
Pardon?
Might be a little bit of an accountability to actually publish that, but that's up to you.
Yep, agreed.
Um, that's all I got.
Make motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilmember Henry.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you all. I don't know, I have no idea where that came from.
Too much of a reaction on that one.
I know.